Andrea, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you.
Minimize this so that you're not taking up your whole screen to view. Isn't that right, Carl? Down just a little bit. Yeah, there you go.
All right.
Uh, what she gives it to us, right?
Well, you trade it, yeah. Anybody can shoot it anytime.
I can hear, I can hear.
Okay, great, thank you. Now, yeah, and then now take it back to the presentation. Present session. But now, come back. There you go. You're set.
Oh, oh, yeah.
There you go. Did you ever hear about from the township?
I did.
Okay.
That's the reason why they didn't do it. Cause they're, uh, cause because their ordinance agency and they just figure they get funded every year.
Okay, right.
Really?
Good evening. Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
I'd rather have it be afternoon, Mr. Livingston, if it's all the same to you, sir.
It sounds like it's more, it's closer to finishing something up or whatever, you know? All right, we'll take that. Let me go ahead on and call the, our, um, budget work session for April 29th order. Um, first item, um, Lou and Ashman's, Matt's first call of the, um, roll for attendance.
Malinowski?
Here.
You? McBride?
Here.
Livingston?
Here.
Tracyo? Joe Walker? Baron? Overture Walker? Mackey?
Here.
English?
Present.
Newton?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, thank you very much. Um, our next item is the adoption of the agenda. Uh, challenging motion for adoption of the agenda for the work session.
Some move, Mr. Chair.
Move. Mr. Second?
Second.
Moving problems second. Um, Mr. Brown, um, any change, deletion, anything to the agenda?
No, sir, Mr. Chair, no changes.
Okay. That brings us to item three on your agenda, that's the presentation of this year twenty twenty grant funds for consideration. Mr. Brown.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, I want to start off briefly, then I'll turn it over to, uh, Ms. Lori Thomas, ACA, and then the Budget Director, James Hayes. So what you have before you, in general, when you look at the recommendations that are being made on this budget by the county administrator, uh, you will notice that there are areas where there's money associated with the items, and then where there are areas where the line items are blank. In general, what we have done is any items that are contractual and statutory or little ordinance related, said to you, here are our general recommendations based on those requirements. And what we're looking for council to do is to provide any additional guidance for areas that are not included in that. With that being said, Mr. Chair, I'd like to just right now give you one update. There is one item within the, the document where there was not a, a line item with numbers attached to it, which is the Township Auditorium. They are in the ordinance agency, but they did not submit information to us, and it was an oversight. They assumed that they would get the same amount, so that amount should be the same as it was in prior years. But other than that, the document should, that we presented should reflect all the accurate information. So with that being said.
Thompson, Dr. Thompson, excuse me, Bill Malinowski, could you direct us to the page in the budget book where that would be?
Sure, that should be budget book page ninety six. And then a packet that you have, the, the separate packet is, uh, of the slides should be page twenty. So budget book page ninety six, slide page twenty. All right, thank you, Mr. Chair, Ms. Thomas.
Thank you very much for, uh, being with us this afternoon. We appreciate all your support and participation in these events. Uh, in fairness, um, grants are one of those things where I'm not as accustomed to Richland County, uh, processes. And with that in mind, um, I've asked, uh, Budget Director Hayes to lead us through this discussion this afternoon.
Thank you, uh, A.C. Thomas. Uh, good afternoon, Chair Livingston, Vice Chair McBride, members of council. Uh, this afternoon, we'll be going over, um, the two types of grants, the grants that the county provides to the community, um, as well as grants that come into the county. Uh, we'll first start off with the general fund grants. Uh, then we'll move toward accommodation tax, uh, age tax, and then, um, Director Voitner will come in to talk about conservation and neighborhood grants. And then we'll finish the afternoon talking about grants that come into the county. So I'll get kicked off this afternoon by talking about, uh, the general fund grants. As you see, I'm sharing my screen. Um, the first, you know, as you've heard me often say, the general fund has basically three categories of grants or outside funding that it provides. Uh, that's the contractual and statutory. Uh, those are the only groups that the general fund has to support. Uh, we'll see in a later slide what those three, um, agencies are. Uh, the second category that the general fund, um, supports is discretionary grant programs. Those are grantees that provide a service-based needs in the community. Um, and those are small grants, and matter of fact, the total of the program, it's about two hundred thousand. There's a discretionary grant committee that recommends those, and matter of fact, there are two council members that sit on it, as well as, uh, I think there's members from the community as well as employee. And then the last set that the general fund supplies is, of course, the lump sum appropriation. That's by far the largest portion that the general fund does support. Historically, these groups have been funded by way of council motions. So those are the three types of categories for, uh, funding. Uh, currently, uh, as Mr. Brown mentioned, the admin is, um, has recommended funding only the contractual, statutory, and discretionary grant program, but of course, council obviously may continue to make motions to fund lump sum if they so choose. So I'll go to the next slide, which we'll start talking about. So the next two slides actually show what the, over the last five years, what the, uh, total of funding has been based off those three categories. The groups that will fall into those three categories, either contractual, statutory, uh, discretionary grant programs, or, um, lump sum appropriation, I'm going to give you the total screen. As you can see, uh, going back to FY seventeen, that number was two point one million. At eighteen, it was three point one million. Nineteen, three point five, uh, twenty, it was three point six. And then currently twenty one is three point three billion. But again, this represents the total amount that's been budgeted each year for the general fund as a whole, for the various categories. Uh, so again, contractual, statutory, uh, discretionary grant, and, um, lump sum appropriations. But I'll stop here for a moment if any council member may have a question.
Okay. Yeah, I, I do, uh, Mr. Hayes, Bill Malinowski. You, you're giving us the, uh, all those previous years from seventeen to twenty one, but where's the recommended amount for twenty two? It's not on this slide.
That, that's a very good question, Mr. Malinowski. As, as we mentioned, is the, the administrator mentioned a moment ago, administration is only recommending amounts for the discretionary grant program, as well as the, uh, contractual, statutory. When we come to, uh, slides at the moment, you'll see those amounts for FY twenty two.
In, in the future, maybe you could put it all together so we don't have to flip back and forth with pages for comparison. Thank you.
Yes, sir. So then I, any more questions, I'll go to the next slide. Uh, again, so, so for FY twenty two, these are the contractual, statutory amounts. Uh, you see the group, what the group, uh, those three groups, of course, is Central Midlands, COG, City Center Partnership, and Luride. The Luride act amount, that historically, that six hundred thousand has just been a placeholder amount, because they get exactly whatever the revenue generates. So whatever the many by the revenue generates, that's what goes to Luride. Uh, the City Center Partnership, they generally ask for more each year by seventy five thousand, but historically, the amount of money that council has funded has been forty seven thousand five hundred. And the COG, their dues go up each year, so this year, their dues are going from one ninety four to two hundred thousand. So, uh, these are the amounts that, uh, would be funded for FY twenty two. And with the exception of if council desires to increase the amount of City Center Partnership to, for their requested amount, or they'll keep it as what we have annually funded, which has been the forty seven thousand five hundred.
Mr. Hayes, is, is, is this the category you said, um, the township would fit on them?
No, 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 the township is on, and on age tax, these are general fund grants.
Okay, thank you, go ahead.
It may not got to age tax yet. Any questions before I go to discretionary grant?
Yes, sir, Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Um, I just want to make sure I'm following along here, because in this book we have, we, we started off on some pages in the beginning, and then we, we skipped several pages with a table labeled fiscal year twenty twenty two discretionary grants committee recommendations. And so is that not needed, or you getting to that later, or we just jumping around the book? I just want to make sure I'm following along.
Okay, you know, and, and let me apologize, you're right, Ms. Mackey, because what we're doing, I'm going by the, let me start over. I'm going by a slide presentation, which is on my shared screen. But to make it easier for council, I did have staff to put in the upper right-hand corner of the slide presentation, the reference in the budget book. So we started off talking about the five-year, uh, historical background of all of the general fund groups. Uh, and then we moved into specific breakdowns, like right now, we're on contractual, statutory. We're going to, which is, i- if you're following on the budget book, that would be page ninety. Next, we were going to discretionary grant program. So I'm following the outline of the PowerPoint this afternoon, but I do recognize some members of council may desire to use their budget book. So I have a reference also in my PowerPoint, the page number that you can follow in the, uh, recommended budget book.
Okay, and then just, can you say it again one more time so I'm clear?
Yeah, so right now.
No, no, not, not what, now you just said, I'm about to ask my question. Um, can you explain again, you said that the administration is recommending not funding which ones?
Right, so, the, right now, currently, the administrator is recommending funding, where you have to pay the contractual, statutory, and he's recommending, of course, a discretionary grant program. But right now, the administrator is not recommending any funding for the lump sum appropriations. That would be, uh, up to council motions.
Thank you.
Ms. Newton?
Thank you, a follow-up question on Ms. Mackey's previous question. The way that I understand things, pardon me, there's a difference between saying, we chose not to make any recommendations in this category because we think council should make recommendations, versus saying, my recommendation is that you not fund any of this category at all. And so I just want to clarify what the administration's intent was when they say that they are not making funding recommendations for that category. Was my question clear?
Yes, ma'am, it's Newton. So because these items are all generated by council motion, I don't have a recommendation for council to move to fund these groups.
Okay, that, that's what I thought, I just wanted to be clear.
Okay.
Because it makes a difference. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Hayes.
So, uh, but again, so right now, we're discussing contractual, statutory, which again, those are three groups that, uh, historically, council has funded. Uh, we're now moved to, if there are not any more questions, we'll move to discretionary grant program, which if you're following in your budget book, will be on page eighty four. Page eighty four. Uh, as I mentioned, the discretionary grant program serves grantees who provide a service-based needs in the community, small grant program, the total of which, uh, totals two hundred thousand. Um, the first couple of pages show, uh, groups that are multi-year funded. Um, some grants, some discretionary grantees receive funding over a three-year period, and those amounts roll over, but what happens is with the committee, everything is put back into a pot, and the committee makes overall recommendations. So you'll see on the next few slides, you'll see, which is page eighty six in your budget book, you'll see the totality of that two hundred thousand that the discretionary grant committee is recommending funding. Again, these members constitute, I think, an employee, some community representative, and most importantly, there are two members of council that sit on it that make the recommendations for this two hundred thousand.
And, Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
These are competitive grants, right?
I'm sorry, ma'am, I'm sorry.
These are competitive grants.
Right, yes, right, that's right, that's right, the committee vets them, and the committee makes recommendation scores. And, and like I said, there are two members of council that do sit on discretionary grant committee.
Mr. Hayes, which two members of council are there?
I'm sorry?
Which two members of council sit on that?
I think it was Ms. Baron and Ms. Deliveston, if I'm not mistaken.
Thank you.
So is this, so we'll move to our next section. Uh, again, we've covered contractual, statutory, discretionary grant, and third, uh, component of, of the discretionary general fund grants are the lump sum appropriations. Here, oh, which is those slides? Oh, here's, yes, ma'am, Ms. Mackey.
I'm sorry, before you went on to the next, I just had a, a question.
Yes, ma'am.
When you talk about discretionary grants, you mentioned that, I guess, some of them have multi-year funding? And so when we are, if we choose to approve, are we committing ourselves right now to two years? Or is this, is twenty twenty two going to be the completion of second year? Did I ask that correctly?
Very good question. So what happens is, these groups, you can opt to apply for, depending on which your level of funding, you get, this particular grant that you get approved for could be a multi-year grant. But what happens is, we say multi-year, but each year, uh, those, everything is put back and you start from scratch. So even though a grantee may have a three-year grant approval, that's not a guarantee that you will get funding in subsequent year, because the committee throws everything back into the pot and, and, and restarts the program. So in essence, uh, even if a person, a group was funded for twenty three and twenty four, if you will, next year, when we get rid of the, the look at twenty three, it's looked at again, so it's not a guarantee.
So why do we call them multi-year grants?
Ms. Mack, can, can I, can I try a minute here, Mr. Hayes?
Please.
Ms. Mack, and the reason why is, is some groups wanted just a one-time, um, um, assistance, and that, and they, they can apply for up to fifteen thousand dollars. But if a group want to apply for three years to get things going, they can do that. And the reason why they have to do that, because there's an opportunity for them to get it next time. They may or may not get it, but there's an opportunity. But if you apply for the fifteen thousand for the first time, then you, you totally not eligible the next year.
Got it. Thank you.
Mr. Livingston?
Yes.
Uh, I, aren't they able to, uh, apply a maximum of, for thirty thousand?
That's for three years.
Yeah, that's a, that's a maximum of thirty thousand.
Yes, for three years and a maximum of fifteen for, for, for the one year.
Yeah.
I'll go to the next, uh, slide, again, we've covered contractual, statutory, discretionary. Now we'll move to the lump sum appropriations. If you're following along in the budget book, that will be page eighty nine in your recommended budget book. Uh, these are the groups that are currently funded through lump sum appropriations for FY twenty one, and that total is two point three million. Uh, these same groups have requested a funding for almost the same amount, two point, just shout, two point three million for FY twenty two. But as you noticed, there are no recommendations as the county administrator. Uh, uh, so because historically, these groups have been funded by council motion.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, and so looking at these numbers, if council reduce the amount of lump sum funding, does that mean that the balance of those funds that aren't spent would go back to our fund balance?
Right, so, that's right, so, so currently, um, these, these amounts are not, uh, as a part of that one hundred eighty seven point nine million that the county administrator is recommending for funding, these amounts are not in there. So that will require additional funds, so that, that is absolutely correct, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes.
Okay, and then I, any more questions, I'll go to the next slide. Uh, so now on it, that's what, we also have some, uh, lump sum distributions that are in other, in other funds, so I did want to highlight those to, um, the council, uh, for some groups like the Congress. These are not in the general fund with the exception of the, the Chamber of Commerce for the bracket funding. That, that fifty three thousand is located in general fund, but just another, another section is normally not tied with the lump sum appropriations. But we have other funds, um, that like stormwater, temporary alcohol, to support some other groups. So see, I just wanted to list those, so, um, Congru River Keepers, one, um, Keep the Midlands Beautiful, and River Alliance. Those three are funded in other funds like solid waste, um, temporary alcohol, and the, um, stormwater.
So, Mr. Hayes?
Yes, ma'am.
Going back to the other funded sources, those sources are from Richland County, right?
Uh, okay, oh, yes, yes, they are, they're, that's right, they're, that's correct. They're, they're just different funds, like one is stormwater, one is temporary alcohol, one of them is, is, um, solid waste. But yes, those are definitely Richland County funds, man.
These are Richland County funds, but this is another category that we use.
That's correct.
Funds, okay, thank you.
They are Richland County, yes, ma'am. So, we're moving now to.
We, go ahead, I think that was, Ms., I mean, and I'm sorry, y'all, I can't see the participant screen here, if you, if you put your hand up.
No, no, no problem.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes, on this slide, I, I guess I just want to be clear. It sounded like you said that these items, you pulled them out because they exist other places in the budget. And so I guess my question is, if these exist other places in the budget, did administration make recommendations in those categories? So for example, you said one of these is in solid waste, so if I go to my budget book for solid waste and I look at this line item, do I see a recommendation? Or is this column correct, that no recommendation was made even for these categories?
So hi- historically, uh, Ms. Newton, the funding would be recommended, in other words, it may not be necessarily, uh, admin, administration made a recommendation for the groups, but the funding is recommended in those particular funds. So, so in other words, each year, those funds are available in stormwater, or available in solid waste, or available in temporary alcohol. But of course, council does not have to fund those groups if that's not the desire of the council.
Okay, I, I think I understand you. I, I think for me, the way it's presented might be a tad bit, uh, misleading for me. Um, I, I don't know that misleading is the right word. I think it is, um, a little bit confusing for me, because it appears that nothing is recommended, but it very well could be recommended in another place, but I can take that, um, another time. Thank you, Mr. Hayes.
Your point's where I take it, Newton. I have Ms. Mackey next, um, and.
Okay.
McBride, I think it's Ma.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I knew you couldn't see.
I can see now, thank you.
Uh, thank you, um, I get, Mr. Hayes, to follow back, um, I guess, to follow along to that same question. So what you show on your slide versus what the table is titled in our book are two different things. And so in the book, it says CNS recommendation, which, what you said earlier was contractual and statutory, which I thought meant we had to pay them or fund them. But now you're saying that they're listed somewhere else and council can decide not to. So can you clarify that for me, please?
Oh, no, right, so let me, let me, that's a good question, let me clarify. So the contractual, statutory, those groups are, do have to be funded. Uh, what I was referencing to what Ms. Newton was saying, these particular groups that are currently showing here on this particular slide, which is also page fifty five, excuse me, seventy nine in your budget book, these are, these are groups that are located elsewhere, but i- and not in the general fund, with the exception of the Chamber of Commerce, which for the Base Realignment Commission, that is, but it's not associated with contractual, statutory. So the other groups, Congru River Keeper, Keep the Midlands Beautiful, and River Alliance, those are not contractual, statutory groups. Those are groups that are located in three other non-general fund funds that the council has the option to fund or not to fund. But these are totally separate from the contractual, statutory.
Okay, so in the book that you provided us, unless it's just my book, on page seventy nine, that title says fiscal year twenty two is CNS recommendations. Does that CNS mean something else?
Right, and, and I, and I, and I'm glad you brought it up, that's actually was a typo on my, if you notice the screen here, I changed the name up to other funds, because that was a typo in terms of putting CNS on that page. But the correct name of that slide would be what you have here, other funds.
Okay, can we also make note that this is updated in this booklet that is posted on our website? And then also, I, I know you're referencing the page, but that change was not referenced anywhere else.
Yes, ma'am, take care of it.
Uh, Ms. McBride?
Yeah, I guess this is a question for Administrator Brown. Is there a reason that these are separate, rather than the, and why they don't come in competitive like the others? Or is there a reason for this funding, and it's not through council? I'm just trying to understand this separate funding and using the interface funds, or have we used them?
Yeah, I, I, that's, I'm gonna have to have budget answer, I'm not, I'm not aware of that, there will be a separate reason, Ms. McBride.
Uh, Ms. McBride, I would have to do some research, but this, historically, these groups have been funded out of those three, uh, stormwater, solid waste, and temporary alcohol. I can go back and, uh, work with the clerks off to see why, um, they have not been competitive for how long, but they just, historically, they've just been funded that way. Uh, but again, I could, um, get some information and put it into our companion document.
Okay, and it's not, I would like to know, but I know you're working on a lot, so don't make it a priority when you get a chance.
Okay. Mr. Hayes, just, just, just follow up on, on one of Ms. Newton's earlier, earlier concerns on page, um, I think it's seventy nine. Um, with Congress recommending, you have nothing to recommend to Congress. I think it's seventy-nine. Um, with Congress recommended, you have nothing to recommend the column. Even if you just push the comment column over recommended, say funding in whatever, whatever, that'd help. But just leaving it blank recommended, you're just assuming that, and, and that's what I did, that there was no recommendation needed funding for those until I looked over to the other column. So maybe if, if you, I'm not sure you need to recommend a column in that, in that, on this page.
Yeah, so Mr. Chair, I, I think with these particular groups, the funding is there. It's just a matter of whether or not you want their funding to remain, big.
Well, I'm aware of that. I'm, I was just talking about the column recommended. I just assumed. I didn't, I, I just spent a whole lot of time watching, looking at the comments column once I started not, you know, nothing in the recommended column.
Okay. Understood.
You may go ahead, Ms. Hayes.
Okay, so, uh, now we will move from the general fund to accommodations tax, which will be found on page ninety-one in your budget book, uh, if you want to follow in your budget book. Uh, just a little bit of historical, um, background, um, and you all may have heard me say a few times that accommodations taxes have dropped even before COVID, COVID, excuse me. Our revenue numbers have been dropping unfortunately, and COVID has not helped it. So we had to kind of back off what we gave the ATAX committee to budget. Historically, we would budget the revenue, uh, again, as you said, for FY twenty-one, three hundred twenty thousand. And we would provide that amount for the committee to make recommendation. This year, we, uh, we couldn't do that. You know, we're still, I think, budgeting, we're anticipating revenue to be around three hundred seventy-five thousand for FY twenty-two. But there were basically three reasons why we did not give the committee that full amount. And number one reason is again, declining in revenue. We wanted to give ourselves a cushion. The second reason is speaking with Director Ham, um, that because, um, revenue has been declining, but expenditures have not been. We have a negative fund balance for accommodations tax. Let me be clear, that's a negative fund balance for the accommodations tax fund, not the general fund, not the hospitality tax fund, but the accommodation tax fund. So any new revenue that would come in would have to first clean up that negative. And then the third reason was the oversight committee that handles, that we, that we do our reporting to the TUR, which is the Tourism Expenditure Review Committee. There are some, um, changes in reporting that we have to do going forward. So all of that coupled with us reducing the amount of availability for the committee to a hundred thousand. So, uh, so that's what we see in the next slide. And again, this is committee recommendations. And this is, uh, of course, obviously, uh, competitive grant. So these are the groups that the committee is recommending for the total of a hundred thousand, which again, you will find on pages ninety-two and ninety-three in your budget book.
Ms. Newton, you recognize?
Chair, and, and thank you, Mr. Hayes. I have three related questions about the ATAX. I will ask them all, and if I need to repeat any, I will. So you mentioned that there was a negative fund balance for ATAX. So my questions are, how much is the negative fund balance for ATAX? My second question is, is that negative fund balance because our revenues declined faster than we anticipated? Or is it for some other reason? And actually, I'll pause on my third question.
Uh, Ms. Hayes, Director Ham may be on board to answer what the negative is for. If not, we definitely get you that answer. But the reason, but the reason, um, the revenue, the negative fund balance exists for twofold. One, re- revenues have declined, but remember, we were budgeting, so it didn't meet the amount that we were actually budgeting for expenditure to these groups. So the groups, of course, got paid the full amount of the grants, but the revenue didn't come in to support it. So hence a negative fund balance.
Thank you. And I can get that number later. I don't need it right now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks. Ms. Newton, if I may to you as well, uh, one of the reasons that we, an additional reason that we did think that this might be a good point to try to true this fund balance up and this fund up is that by, by accommodation tax statute, we have two years to spend that money. So if we allocate a hundred thousand this year and we by some chance collect more than that after we satisfy the negative fund balance, we can actually disperse those funds next year along with what we would project for the following year.
Thank you. That's helpful. And let me just say, I fully support us truing up. Uh, I don't want us to have a negative fund balance. I was just trying to understand what the cause was so that we could look at what we could do to present, prevent it in future. But it looks like that's what we're doing in terms of holding back some of those funds. So my question has been addressed except separately from this, if someone could tell me the amount of that negative fund balance. Thank you, Chair.
Stacy Hammond, Finance Director. I do have that number. Took me a minute to grab it. Um, it is negative one oh two five thirty-three, so just over a hundred and two thousand dollars.
Mr. Chair, thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Newton. You finished?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Tricia?
Thank you. And, uh, Steph might not have the answer for this. Uh, but is there a reason that we had? I mean, I knew you said that, uh, revenues were declining even before COVID. Um, do you all happen to know or happen to ha- uh, have a guess why that's happening? I mean, is, you know, the city of Columbia annexing all of our, uh, uh, places where this revenue would come from? I mean, is there, is there a reason that you could state or no?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Tricia, I actually did look at it about two years ago, actually. And that, um, I did reach out to some members of the state and I do a follow-up research. But at the time, that was one of the reasons is that some of the hotels and, uh, and the light that were in the county were being picked up now by the city. Uh, and so subsequently, we were losing some revenue. Uh, but yeah, that, that was a part of the reason. But I'm, I'm gonna go back and, um, do some further research to see if I can get some additional reasons why that may have been the case. But that certainly was one of the reasons.
Okay, that was, that was just a wild guess on my part, but yeah, that, it does make sense.
Okay. So we'll go to the, uh, if there is not any more questions on accommodations tax, we'll now go to hospitality tax. And again, only the, the next slide is just showing the detailed same information for, uh, accommodations tax is just a little greater detail. It's still the same groups for a hundred thousand. Uh, so now we'll go to hospitality tax, which if you're following in your budget book, is on page ninety-six in your budget book. We'll start, uh, on this current slide, which again, page ninety-six on your budget book. And currently, we are projecting revenue for FY twenty-two to be seven point four million versus current year revenue projection is six point three million. Uh, you'll see a footnote there, um, well, let me back up a little bit. Hospitality tax is the one and only fund that supports the general fund. And we're able to do that because of the public safety of EMS and the shared department do support tourism activities. So there are two transfers out from the, uh, the hospitality tax fund, which total of four point four million. One of that is three million, which goes to the general fund. The other one point four million is the debt service fund. So what the administrator is currently, uh, recommending is that we, uh, he's recommending funding for the H tax committee, which historically has been given a budget of five hundred thousand. And he's recommending funding, of course, for the transfers out. But he's also recommending that we do not use fund balance for this current year for the H tax. So that would leave roughly two point two million to fund the other groups for, um, H tax. And it, and there are different categories. There is the, uh, as he mentioned, there's the ordinance agencies, there's special promotions, and there are tier three. If council would, uh, to make recommendations to fund everything at last year's level, that will require fund balance from H tax, again, not the general fund, but H tax fund balance in the roughly the amount of one point six million. But the administrator's recommendation is that we do, we only use current year revenue, which right now we're projecting to be seven point four million. So I'll stop there to answer any council question.
And Mr. and Mr. Livingston, Chair Livingston, this is where the, this is where the township is, uh, listed. And again, the only reason why there is not funding there was because they did not reach out, but they thought we would just put in what they routinely received. So that's the only reason why there is not money listed there for the township.
So that would just fast, it's gonna be the same if.
It'll be the same.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And, and if council opts to fund every group at the same level as FY twenty-one, the total, uh, additional fund balance needed would be just shot of one point six million to balance the budget. And that will cover, um, the ordinance agencies at last year's amount, the special promotions as well as tier three.
Mr. Chair? Yes, it is.
You recognize?
Mr. Hayes, could you repeat that last sentence again? Basically, you were saying that, I'll just let you repeat your sentence if you recall, comparing the recommendation for fiscal FY twenty-one versus FY twenty-two and what the, what would be required to balance the budget if we did not.
Right, so, yeah, so right now, so right now, the administrator is recommending that we certainly use revenue to cover, um, our expenditures for FY twenty-two, which that would only leave two point two million to fund all of the, um, H tax group, all of the ordinance agencies, all of the tier three, all of the, um, special promotion groups. If council opts to fund every group at its FY twenty-one level, that will require funds over and above what the revenue, current projected revenue can support. So we would need to roughly about one point six million in fund balance from H tax, not the general fund, but the hospitality tax fund balance to balance the budget, of just shot one point six million.
Thank you.
So, uh, I'll go to the next slide. So this shows the rest of it, um, and I'll, I'll pause for a moment. Uh, there were a couple of groups that, um, some council members, uh, uh, asked to, uh, whether these groups reached out and we, uh, they applied through Zoom grants. So they, the, the RC Bodyball Complex and the SC King Foundation Next Level, uh, we got instructions for at least to put these groups before council. So obviously, I wanted to do my due diligence, uh, and these are the two groups that were, I guess, reached out to some members of council for funding, so.
What was those groups? Are they in the book here? What groups were those again?
Ninety-seven.
Seventy, thank you.
Page ninety-seven.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Chair, I don't know if you recognize.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Hayes, you said you got instructions to put these in the book. Who gave you those instructions?
So, no, no, what I mean by that is we, we, we had a couple of, uh, groups that reached out by way of, uh, council members. And we wanted to make sure that we put those requests in the budget book. That's what I meant, sir.
But did those requests come in after the deadline?
Yes, sir. They, yeah, yes, you can, I guess you can say that, sir.
So going back to what I've always said, if we have a deadline and we start to make one exception, then what difference it make where the next exception comes from? Somebody could put in a request tomorrow and you'd have to put it in the budget book, even though it's past the deadline because you've already extended the deadline, uh, and made exceptions. So I personally don't think that this should be there. If we've got deadlines, we need to keep the deadlines. If you missed it, sorry, try again next year. Thank you.
Mr. Hayes, Mr. Chair?
You recognize? Again, Mr. Keith's phone.
Who, this is McBride.
No, no, I'm saying, go ahead, Ms. McBride, then Ms. Newton, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, um, following up with Mr. Malinowski's question. If those that came in after the deadline, if they were removed, there still would be another opportunity for whatever council members or whoever made the request for them to recommend that they be put back in.
Oh, oh, yes, yes, ma'am, absolutely. Because you all, uh, make H tax recommendations throughout the year. Yes, ma'am.
So I'm sort of going along with, uh, following Mr. Malinowski since they came in after the, um, deadline. But there still would be an opportunity at a later time to have them placed back in. So I agree with, um, the protocol that Mr. Malinowski is talking about. And at the same time, they still will have an opportunity at, at another point in the budget process. Just a statement and you answered my question. Thank you.
Mr. Livingston, am I recognized?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Hayes, it can be separately. My request would be, um, just that I get additional information about these requests and what they're for. I'm not familiar with the two organizations that you mentioned that that came in, I guess, and were, were added here by a council member's request, but would just like more information later.
Yes, yes, Ms. Newton, we, we, uh, we have that information in Zoom grants, and I'll make sure we put it in the companion document.
Thank you.
Uh, so again, just to reiterate, if council opts to fund everything at FY twenty-one level, it just would require an additional one, roughly one point six million from H tax fund balance. And that does not include, of course, the new groups. As I mentioned earlier, the H tax also has a committee that funds, uh, historically, those groups, uh, have a budget of five hundred thousand. So these are the groups that the H tax committee has recommended. And you can see, and this again starts on page ninety-eight in your budget book. And it goes through page one, uh, one ninety, one oh four. As you can see, the total is five hundred thousand. So these are the groups that the committee is recommending for funding for FY twenty-two for H tax.
Okay. Now, what are we projecting for H tax funding for, um, this coming year?
Seven point four million dollars, Mr. Livingston.
If there are not any, any more questions on H tax, uh, Chair Livingston, I'll turn the floor over to Director Boydner to pick up conservation and then neighborhood redevelopment.
Mr. Chair, I'd ask that you recognize, uh, Mr. Quint Nets, who's gonna be presenting information on the conservation grants, and Mr. Brian Crooks, who's gonna be presenting information on neighborhood redevelopment. Thank you.
Mr. Ashen, then Ms. Ryan, thank you.
Um, Mr. Hayes, could you, uh, drop down? I think that maybe the next slide starts. There you go. The Richland County Conservation Commission Grant Program provides two hundred fifty thousand dollars per year to help constituents protect the county's natural, historical and cultural resources. What you see here is the FY, in FY twenty-two, we received twenty-two applications. And the, the Conservation Commission recommends that we fully fund twelve of those. And you see the list, and it, it goes down another page. Three applications were for partial funding, six applications for no funding, and one application was withdrawn by the applicant. And, um, I'm sorry to keep, uh, well, I'll just go ahead down to this. There was an application from, that was approved in FY twenty-one, which we are requesting because due to the pandemic, it wasn't able to be completed because it was interviewing um, older folks in the community, and that wasn't able to be done. And we would like that to be rolled over into FY twenty-two. And James, if you would, go back to that, uh, first page. This shows the percentages of where the FY twenty-two grants are located. There's fifty percent of the recommended grants are within the City of Columbia's Incorporated areas. Fourteen percent of the grants are in Blythewood Incorporated. Twenty-seven percent are in the unincorporated areas, and nine percent are, uh, basically throughout the county. And I'll, I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have. Mr. Chair, Bill Malinowski. Thank you, sir. Mr. Epps, is this the one that, uh, the council in the past, uh, that there is an actual guideline indicating?
that there is an actual guideline indicating what you should be striving for regarding the percentages? Just the one that says it's recommended that you try to get seventy five percent of these grant funds to unincorporated and twenty five percent to other?
If the if that is the case, I'm not aware of it. Would that would that be in the ordinance or is that?
There was something several years ago, because every single year this happens where our grants go more toward incorporated areas versus unincorporated, or was that with the H tax?
That was more with H, some discussion with H tax. I don't remember an agreement, but that that that's been a discussion.
Okay, yeah, that's it. Okay, never mind. Thank you.
I think it's both. Well, the reason why these are these are funds from the Conservation Commission, correct?
Yes, sir.
And and these funds are generated by the entire county. It's not, these are not, this this is a millage fund. It's not a fund that's generated by one proportion of the county. That's why we said these funds should be appropriate. You guys saw out the county because they're generating throughout the county.
Go ahead. My question's been answered. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Are there any other questions?
I I miss when you when you initially started out talking about something you want to change with some funding, but don't worry about it. I'll get it later. Then we know.
It's two hundred and fifty thousand per year, and and this is to protect, help constituents protect natural, historical, and cultural resources.
But is there something you want to move to the next year or something?
Oh, yes, sir. James, if you would go down to that last slide, I think it's page thirty one. We did one of the grants from this year was was definitely not to been able to be completed because it is basically interviewing older people and trying to get their story.
You want to just roll that over to this year?
Yes, sir.
Mister Livingston and I were available, Mister Epps, so I don't know how you couldn't interview older people.
You can get enough of y'all. Any other questions?
The funding source, Mister Livingston, was millage funds?
Yes, Conservation of Millage H, yes. I mean, I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead. Who was about to say something? Is it not correct the Conservation Commission still receives a half mill?
Yes, sir, that is correct. And that is where these funds come from.
Any other questions of this app? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Or I think who's going to present the neighborhood?
Yes, sir. So next we have the Neighborhood Matching Grant. So this comes from the half mill for the redevelopment Neighborhood Redevelopment Fund. So this is the Neighborhood Matching Grant, and it provides neighborhood organizations and associations funds to improve their neighborhood by means of organizational development, educational initiatives, recreational initiatives, and public safety efforts. So this allows for awards up to fifteen hundred dollars per organization. A match is required, and that match can be done through volunteer hours, through other grants or just neighborhood funds themselves. So we had we had thirty applicants for this year. We are recommending twenty six for full funding as requested. One applicant is recommended for partial funding. And then we are recommending three for disapproval due to lack of information, incomplete forms, vendor quotes, things of that nature. So total, we are recommending thirty seven thousand, three hundred and eighty eight dollars and thirty seven cents. And I'm here to answer any questions that councilmen have.
Any questions reference the neighborhood grant and fund recommendations? Miss McBride, you recognize?
I just have a comment. This is the smallest amount of funding that we provide, probably fifteen hundred dollars max. And we require more from them than we do for a hundred thousand dollar grant. I just think that we need to make it as simple as possible to encourage more neighborhood associations to participate. And to have them write up a match, to me, is a little bit overkill. When many of the neighborhood associations do not apply because they don't know how to write grants. So I just think that in the future, there is something that we could look at in terms of making sure that this is as simple as possible. Thank you.
I agree with you, Miss McBride.
Thank you, Mister Chair. So I was I was thinking the same thing on the lines of Miss McBride, you know, as being a former HOA president and an applicant of these funds. While the process may not have been difficult for me as an individual, but I do believe that exactly what Miss McBride is saying, we the process is extremely convoluted. It's a lot of information that perhaps I think we can do away with. And I would love to see this process streamlined for future use to include some of the communities that I now represent. I know that they would want to get these these funds to help their community. They don't have HOAs like I do in my in my subdivision. So their general fund budget, you know, doesn't exist. It doesn't exist, but these dollars could definitely help them. So anything that we can do to streamline this process, I really would appreciate it. Thank you.
Mister Chair. If there's room for one more on this bandwagon, let me just add that there are also groups, to Miss Barron's point, that don't have formal HOAs, and so they're not even aware. They they have these more informal community groups that are working for the good of the community, but really are not even aware of these programs. So in addition to everything that we've talked about, and I know this is slightly separate from the budget, but I hope it will impact the budget in future if we could look at ways that we might be able to expand our outreach to some of those groups. I do think it would be helpful. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Got questions regarding neighborhood improvement, matching grant program? If not, that move is to where county, what I was gonna do?
Okay, yeah, Mister Chair, I'll pick back up now. So we have spent afternoon talking about grants that the county provides to the community. We'll end this afternoon talking about grants that come into the county. As you know, the county has unlimited amount of needs, but a very limited amount of resources. So grants play a core, critical role in helping us to get things done. We tried to streamline this section this year. We did not include grants that the council has already approved that don't need it. So we took those out. So what you have before you, which starts on page one twelve in your budget book, if you want to follow. This is a summary sheet of the grants that are being requested by departments. And just to give you a summary, and then you all have specific questions about grants. We do have, we have asked each of the departments to be online. But just how you read the sheet, you start reading from left to right. It tells the department who is requesting it. It tells the grant type, continuing, meaning if the we if the grantee, if the department currently has an allocation from the grantor, but they're requesting a new one for FY twenty two, it's continuing. If you see new, that means the grant, the department doesn't currently have that grant. The next, the next one shows the project name and the description, start, ending date. And then the next two are the dollar amounts. It shows what the what the the project total and how much of that is covered by a grant. In the there's like, for example, line one, that total is three hundred ten thousand. The amount requested would be three ten. There are some grants that do have a cash match amount. The next column shows the percentage of admin cost allowed. And then we get into positions because we know council has always been interested. If a grant has a position, does that position have to be picked up? So there's a column that tells you that the position does not have to be picked up. The department may want the council to do so, but it doesn't have to. So again, this is a summary of the various departments who are requesting funding for FY twenty two. You see the different departments, the CASA, Community Development, Coroner, E S D, Public Works, the Sheriff, and Solicitor. And if you have specific questions about the grants, we do have those members on the line to answer any council question.
Any questions regarding the new county grant request? I don't see no hands, Mister Hayes. I don't think there are any questions.
We put out one number on the sheet, the total match amount, where I'll say it quickly before Miss Newton's question. The total match amount for for these grants, if council were to approve them, will be three hundred thirty thousand, eight eighty nine. And that's keeping in line generally with what we budget for match amounts each year in the four hundred to five hundred, four to five hundred thousand dollar range. But I'll stop right now because I see Miss Newton had a question.
Yes, you recognize.
Thank you, Mister Hayes, and you actually just addressed the first one of my questions. So thank you for anticipating where I was going to go in terms of the total amount. And again, sorry, this is silly because it's not here on the sheet, but our administration is making no recommendations in terms of these grants. Is that correct?
So, Miss Newton, to the extent that these grants will provide additional coverage for the departments, and that we're not required to pick up personnel in future years, then I have no issue with these grants being approved by council.
Thank you, Mister Brown. Thank you, Mister Chair.
And and that was my follow up question. As I looked at this, I didn't see any required position to be picked up. Is that correct? Zero?
That is correct, sir.
Mister Chair.
Miss Malinowski?
Yes, sir, thank you. Mister Hayes, I'm looking here. What? I don't see where you keep getting this three hundred ten thousand you're referring to. What page is this on?
Oh, right, so three hundred thirty thousand.
Oh, three hundred thirty. Okay, that's on page one sixteen.
It's currently on the screen, but it's on page one sixteen in the budget book.
I see. I got it. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, I I I heard the wrong amount. That's all.
He said he was getting, he said he was old.
That's why they better interview me quickly.
I miss that. Brad, you recognize?
It's a matter of show it in in more detail on page one seventeen because it shows the departments that need and the grants that do need to match. So it's broken down further on page one seventeen in your budget book.
Got you. Thank you. Thank you. Mister McBride, you recognize?
And just a comment, we are bringing in over, is that over twenty eight million, almost twenty eight million dollars, Mister Hayes? These grants will provide almost twenty eight million dollars for county services. Is that correct?
But I'm glad you brought that up. That'll go to the next section there. So so as you say in that, so for the continuing grants, there are twenty four positions for the new grants, and then I'm on page one eighteen in your budget book for the full time positions associated with it. So so of the current grants, there are twenty four positions for the new for the for the new grants, that would be additional seven. So it would be a total of thirty one positions.
Mister Hayes, did she ask a different question, sir?
I was just looking at the amount of the amount of money that.
Yeah, there we go. Thank you. So that that with that total value.
Oh, how do I raise my hand?
Yeah, twenty eight point two million.
Right, so that's really an asset for the the county. In addition, many of these recommendations came directly from the agencies, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, so right. So each of these, all we do is manage the process, but these these departments themselves are the ones requesting the amount and working with them. So, yes, so any specific question, the individuals are allowed, certainly could answer that. But yes, the departments, we have more detail about this.
Thank you.
Brad, you through. Miss Kane?
Oh, yes, I was just going to answer Councilwoman McBride's question to say, yes, if if all of these grants are approved and we get them, then yes, ma'am, we will actually get a total of almost twenty eight million, and it will cost the county almost three hundred and thirty one thousand. So.
And Marjorie, could you you and Steve talk about the fact that none of these positions, and Mister Chair Livingston had a question, none of these positions have to be picked up by the county, correct?
Correct.
That is correct.
Yes, if we choose to, that is the county's option. But no, none of these have to be picked up by the county when the excuse the cuckoo clock, when when the grant is finished. In fact, some of these, the positions do end when.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm new to all this.
Mister Hayes, you may go ahead. Any more? Are there questions? McBride, did you? You need to speak. Was that before? You recognize you need to speak.
So the the last part, the very last slide had to do with the position impact, as I mentioned before. So these are currently of the current grants, there will be twenty four. And again, potential grant pickup, again, these these are not positions that have to be picked up. These are just the full time positions associated with the grant currently. And then of the new grants that will come on in FY twenty two, there'll be seven new positions. But of those thirty one positions, the council does not have to pick those positions up.
Correct. And this page shows the financial impact of what these grants are paying. And if the council did decide to pick up these positions when the grants are complete. What you're seeing here is what was paid out in fiscal year twenty for these grants, fiscal year twenty one is actual and estimated through the end of twenty one. Twenty two and twenty three are what the grants are going to pay for these positions. And if anybody has any questions, I would be happy to answer them or the departments.
Mister Chair, Bill Malinowski. Is this an error that I'm looking at? Because on the bottom of page one sixteen, as you stated, Miss King, you get almost three hundred thirty one thousand in payments to receive twenty eight thousand in grants. Yet on the bottom of page one seventeen, it shows that same almost three hundred thirty one thousand, but it only shows one point seven seven eight million.
Yeah, I I I'll answer that, Mister Madam. That's a very good question, very good. But not every grant has a match. So what we showed on this page, we extrapolated from the master sheet, only those grants that have a match.
Okay, so we're actually putting out three hundred thirty one thousand to get one point eight million, correct?
In terms of cash match grants, but the other grants, like the the big one, some of the big ones, like for the MIT grant and some of the other grants, they do not require a match. So you'll be getting those funds without putting up a cash match. But but for those particular ones, that is correct, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we're discussion. Discussion from my colleagues, any additional questions? If not, now the next thing on my agenda is adjourned.
I'll turn it back over to A C Thompson, Mister Brown.
Who did your?
Mister Brown, you have any comment? Make sure. Mr. Brown, you have any comment? Make sure.
Sir, I I I've heard what Mr. Malinowski said. I'm done.
This motion adjourns our second.
Thank you.
It's moved in properly second. This message cover over the motion adjourned hour work session.
Yes, I'll call the roll. Malinowski?
Yes.
Hugh?
Yes.
McBride?
Thank you, Mr. Brown, Mr. Hayes' staff.
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tracyo? Walker? Joe Walker? Baron?
Yes.
Overture Walker? Mackie?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes.
Yes, and let me thank everybody for participation. So you can take your budget book to bed with you tonight to make sure you, you know, you come in and got everything and you're ready for the next time in first reading.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Bye.
I have to figure out how to exit.